Hereby open Board of Selectmen meeting June 18th, 2018 at 6:00 PM at the Rutland Library. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm gonna close the door because it's echoing.
Echo.
Uh-oh.
We lost our flag.
The flag's in the other room still.
Let's hold.
Still in the big room, big meeting room.
Are they in a meeting right now?
We can look that way. Where's the flag?
I'm good with it.
We can. The flag is in the next room.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we apologize for that. Can I get a motion to sign Treasury warrant, 26th and Payroll?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. We have one set of meeting minutes. Skip, I think, no, you were there. We were all there. Does anybody have a chance to review them? You may have a motion to accept.
Make a motion. Second.
Thank you, anything, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we're jumping straight into our appointments, 6 o'clock. Sean McGlothlin. Come on up. Thank you. Name and address, please. And the reason, oh, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sean McGlothlin, I live at 175 Barry Paxton Road. I am here on behalf of Rutland Usaka looking to propose field use space and request for Rutland Usaka to lease space from the town either at Glenwood. I spoke with Margaret and we looked at the town-owned property. And there's only real two options for field use space that would accommodate the soccer fields. And that would be Glenwood, which is open space, you know, no trees that are in the way, it's just basically leveling and doing what we need to do to comprise the field setups and parking and everything. The other one would be, that I noticed was Forest Hill Drive. That's between Central Tree Middle School and Rutland Heights. I have yet to been able to spot where the property is. We looked at it and we couldn't find it. It's on the list.
So that's the one that's adjacent to Central Tree Middle School. That is, that lies between the Rutland Heights property and Central Tree.
Correct.
There was discussion quite a while ago for potential recreational uses for a portion of that piece of property, but concerns arose because of ecological education type stuff.
It's all wooded.
And most of it is wooded, yeah.
So it would mean, you know, cutting down the trees and everything, and that's why, I mean, we'd opt for right in front of Glenwood School because no trees, we don't have to harvest any trees or anything, we just have to level the land out to make the fields to accommodate the soccer. And that would be, that'd be the best option. You know, centrally located, and it would work best for, I think, all. And soccer, we're growing rapidly in town, as you know, a lot of kids are coming through, and soccer is an up-and-coming sport, and it's not just a one-season sport anymore. I mean, it's year-round. So, that's why we need space. I mean, I don't, with Rec Department, the DPW this year trying to get field use space for mountain club soccer, which a lot of the Rutland kids belong to, and I coach as well. And it was very difficult to try to get space between baseball and soccer. Baseball was getting a lot of the fields. So basically what we're looking for is something like Marsh. Baseball, Rutland Youth Baseball leases the land at Marsh Field, we're looking to do the same at Glenwood. So that's what we're proposing.
Where would the field be?
In front, in front of Glenwood, on the right, that big parcel.
On the right as you're going in?
As you drive, yeah, driving in, right on the right. It's, I believe it's eight acres. I don't have the diagram with me. I believe it's approximately eight acres, right there.
What's it look like now?
It's just open now.
So it's an open field?
Yeah, it's an open field.
One of the farmers use it for, like, is that the one that the farmers use to bale the hay, or?
I believe they do some hay on that.
Yeah, but there is no contract for that particular parcel, so it's done.
Just to keep it down.
Okay.
It's not listed in, because the hayfield contract is a five-year contract. That was talked about when the last contract was signed, to put that on the inventory for the next time, and that's up next year.
So basically they're using it right now, they're just maintaining it.
So wait.
To keep the grass down.
I thought that field was on the hay contract, it's not?
I don't have it with me, the contract with me, because I didn't know we were gonna speak about hayfields, but no, we looked at that, Margaret and I looked at that.
Gary has confirmed that it's not part of the hay contract.
But somebody's getting hay from it.
Somebody's getting hay.
Oh yeah, no doubt, yeah, it has been cut, it has been cut, but it's more just to keep it down.
Skip, do you know who cut it?
Well, it's changed over the years, Randy had it one year.
This room was the last one?
The farm had it from Bond Street. Sorry, I can't remember the name of the farm, the farm had it, I can't remember the gentleman's name.
He's also got the, he's also got the Central Tree and Wheeler Road sites, doesn't he?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, could, do you mind just going through for the board that's here, the inventory of fields that you have now and their condition?
Right now, we, the only field that we have is the Central Tree Middle School, and that's not even our field. Rutland Usaka doesn't have a field.
But you, what you use?
We, we can put in a request through the Rec Department.
Yep.
And like I tried to do this year, and as Gary's aware, I tried to do that this year, and it was, you know, we weren't able, the only thing we were able to get was Central Tree lower and Glenwood in the back.
Right.
Because from my understanding, that was, an individual used his own money to put the field there.
Yep.
So that's, we were able to use that, but that was limited as well because of tick, ticks and everything, I guess there's a very bad tick population down there, so.
Well, we live in Rutland.
Well, yeah, so it was, I mean, they did use it, but it wasn't, it was difficult.
Okay, so, so the Central Tree field is lined for what, what level? Do they change it?
The, the lower field was the U-12, U-14.
The big, the big field?
Yes.
The Glenwood field was lined for 10?
Yes.
But you didn't use it for U-10 this spring at all?
We had, we had two teams practicing on that field because we had no other location, so there were two teams at the same time.
At Central Tree.
Same with Central Tree.
Okay.
So we had two teams practicing on the field, instead of having one, you know, one team on the field practicing, we had to have two.
And then do you consider the community center side field to be part of your inventory for the little kids?
That is basically, it's based on the Recreation Department.
Right, but soccer's been there every fall.
Right.
Right? Is that, is it fair to say that, that that's kind of your home base for?
Well, we, we believe so, but lately, fall baseball has been occurring, so now they're starting to use more fields.
At the community center?
Yes.
Yes, the community center.
And then the football is starting to use fields, because now they're doing that. I know, I got a call from the Rec Department today to see if we were done with the field at Glenwood, because the football's using that now. So, with the, with the growing population in Rutland, the sports are growing, and right now Rutland Usaka's getting squeezed because we don't have the field availability. And the other sports are, are taking over, and that's why we're looking to get, you know, have an opportunity to build, you know, a couple fields so we have, we have a home base. And we don't have to worry about, are we gonna be able to practice here, are we gonna be able to practice at all? And, I mean, as a coach, I'm going to other towns with our kids, and we're getting killed because we don't have the practice space.
No, I.
We don't have the, you know, your son plays soccer, and it's, it's terrible. I mean, we don't have the, we're not giving our children the opportunity that they need to succeed in the sport.
Sean, honestly, I, and I know that Jeff has a question, I don't think, I don't think there's any question that everyone knows that we have a lack of space across pretty much every sport you could possibly imagine.
And cemetery space.
And cemetery.
Cemetery space.
Office, office space, meeting space, there's a few other things.
We have to, though.
I know.
Go ahead.
Well, I guess my only question is, so if, if the town would lease you this land and you make a nice field out of it, is that available to the school also during school hours?
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have access to it because it's up in front and they, they staying back.
If they wanted to, could they use it?
We'll be maintaining the property and everything, we don't want them to really destroy it, it's like Marsh Field's locked up and no one can go on it.
So the school wouldn't have access to it?
They're looking for an exclusive use lease agreement.
Yeah, exclusive lease for soccer, just like, just like baseball has with Marsh Field. Like you can't even, you can't practice on it, you can't go on that field.
Glenwood School, good. Glenwood School.
In front of Glenwood, that parcel of land.
What it says, Dick, what it's, what I've read on that Glenwood property, is you cannot build any permanent structures, you can do anything you want with it, no permanent structures. Soccer field is not a permanent structure.
Yes, but then what about the agricultural, because that was classified as premium agricultural land, and that's what it was supposed to be.
There are no, there are no restrictions in that deed.
Sean, how many fields can you get up there?
We're looking at two.
Two?
We're looking at a.
Cause I can't tell on the map here.
We're looking at a U-14 field and a U-12 field.
So, Sean, I, you kind of, as a side note, listed parking, walkway, and lighting concerns to be considered, but that's huge. There's a walkway on one side, not both. Parking is an issue even at school events.
No, I understand.
Big issue, we know. And access is an issue when people park on both sides of all of our roadways in front of the schools, so.
Well, that's.
Is there a plan?
Well, that's what we're.
Parking is an issue and everything that goes on it.
Yeah. I mean, well, that's, that's one of the reasons we want to try to get the ball rolling and find out, so we can mark out the parcel, see where we can put the fields, and, I mean, my preference would be put the parking right near the roadway, so if the school does need access, you know, concerts and stuff, they can park in the parking lot. It would just be that the fields would have, it'd be fenced, because you need fence for the soccer balls and everything, and then there'd be a lock on the gate, just like at Marsh. They have the, they have the gate and there's a lock on it, and you don't have access to it. To the field.
Mr. Kneckel, name, name and address.
What's wrong with the heights?
Name and address. If you.
18 Blueberry Lane, Lou Conneville.
Thanks.
When we bought the property from the hospital, if I remember correctly, the whole sailing point was someday, if not business, industry, which we know we're never gonna get, that it would be municipal buildings and playing fields. Why aren't we looking at the heights? That field in front looks to me like it wouldn't be right up in front, would be, when you come in the gate on the left-hand side, would be good size, where you wouldn't have to do a lot of.
Yeah.
And you'd have parking on Maple Ave.
Right, they.
Is the heights off limits now?
I, I cannot speak for everyone, and obviously our DOC is not fully represented here tonight. Absolutely has been a conversation about where and when to put fields, to put a bandstand, right? We've had, we have a lot of plans for the property, it has always been contingent on trying to get, and we haven't given up on any development up there yet, and I would honestly say, I think the overall feeling across the board over the past few years has been, we need to save the road frontage parcels for commercial development, because it's what they want. It's what we heard from Jay Ash when he came out from the governor's office, it's what we're hearing from everybody, they're gonna want road frontage and visibility, so I personally wouldn't put the fields there, but I, I agree with you, I don't see why we wouldn't, at some point, consider a bigger project where the fields connect with the school properties.
Can I add to that?
That would be that Forest Hill Drive parcel.
Yeah.
That's right, but that's, that's a lot of clearing.
The Rutland Heights marketing plan specifies that the tax revenue, the tax revenue generation is the primary goal, it's not an either-or, so it would be, it'll allow commercial, very limited residential, like senior housing, municipal, and recreation, but I, I've never read it as an either-or. Dick, you could clarify, I think there's supposed to be a mix of use with the primary purpose being tax revenue generation from commercial.
I was on the very first committee that looked into Rutland Heights, Jerry Power was the chairperson, I was the vice-chairperson. There were two or three, I think Helen Vine was on it, Ralph Anderson's wife was on it, and there were a couple others. We had headhunters come in, and we were told, and it's bad, it's borne fruit, because we're going way, way back, okay, way, way back, into the 90s. We were told by the headhunters who came in here, and this is when the buildings were still up, and they were rehabbed by the state, the state had rehabbed those buildings. The guy said to us, this is an ideal place for people to start up businesses that have now, their garage is too small. You don't have any infrastructure, no one's gonna come out here, nobody's gonna come out here. And that was back in the 90s. You could go look up the report that Jerry wrote, he wrote a brilliant report about it, and you haven't had anything come in there yet. So I'm not saying, put the field in there now, if, for chance, something comes out of the sky and you have some developer that wants to come in and use it, then you take this field away. But it's, it's, that's what it was there for. I was on, I was involved in a town back then, Dick Williams knows about the arguments that went back and forth about that.
Thank you.
You've got land, use it.
Thank you, I'll consider that part two of the first time we recognize you, go ahead.
Me personally, I'd rather do Glenwood, not have to worry about someone coming in and taking the land.
But you.
For development purposes, you know what I mean, but I'm just saying.
You can understand, Sean, it's, it's not about, let's just give you the easiest piece, unfortunately, I mean, this has come up again and again and again, we know that there are infrastructure concerns up at Central Tree as well, there's stuff that's buried that's gonna have to get broken up, and, and we know.
I mean, we're, it's a nonprofit organization, so we're looking for the easy way out, because we're gonna have to look for volunteers to do the leveling and everything. Unfortunately, we don't have the capabilities of clearing land, taking, you know, buildings, pieces of building out, that, that's very costly. So that's, that's another reason that we're.
Thanks, Jeff.
I like the idea that you're looking to improve the property around the school, and I don't necessarily have a problem with the $1 lease, but I would like to see the reasonable access allowed to the school. If you're going to build a nice field directly in front of the Glenwood School, if they had some reasonable use for it, I would like to think that it's not closed off for them because it's town property.
It would be.
Yeah, but if we're leasing it.
Excuse me, sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
As a condition of your lease.
It would be nice, they're gonna do the work, as long as they control the field, and I don't have a problem with it. But this school system we have dictates to this town, every time you turn around, what they're gonna do, when they're gonna do it, and how they're gonna do it.
Actually, for the fields, I think, and you can speak for Sean, it's been kind of the opposite, the kids are kept off the playing fields to an extent that might be even too much for various sports. They really are, those kids are kept off the fields.
Yeah, but if they had a good field, a real nice field, let's be real.
That's mainly done being off the field. Due to Gary. Gary's the one that basically says if the fields are able to be played on. If, if it wasn't for him, those fields would be destroyed, because the schools really don't care too much, honestly, they don't.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't believe they do, because I've, I've seen the fields. If they really cared, they'd put the, they'd put some time into repairing them.
Well, actually, we care for the fields.
Well, no, I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying you, I'm talking to, like, the school budget and everything, because.
No, that's, it's us, we're the ones that mow.
Okay, well then, I hate to insult you, but honestly, it's.
No, I think we.
I mean, we're looking at Central Tree, we're looking to try to, put.
Yeah.
You know.
Yep, yep.
We're trying to hydroseed at Central Tree, just to try to get the mud out of there.
Right.
Because it's that bad. And, you know, it's just, the schools really don't, I mean, I just, nothing against you guys, it's just they're not maintained that great.
Thank you.
It's just that, I mean, you're asking for a $1 lease and for something that would hold a value, I just think it's reasonable to.
Well, we just.
Excuse me, if you, if you could let the, just let us talk a little bit, we're good, we will totally listen to you, everything.
I'm sorry.
I mean, I think the concern we have is that we can see what Marsh Field has become, we wouldn't have ever had the funds to do that as a town, so it is, it is beautiful, but it is very restrictive, there's a point to that, it's very exclusive.
Exclusive.
We know that softball has an issue playing on it, and it's because of what was specifically done to it, in this case, the mound issue, softball versus baseball, which we all know. That said, Marsh Field is a showpiece, they're getting money from Little League because of its exclusivity, to your point.
And they're also up for a lease.
They are up for a lease.
They're up for a lease and.
Yeah, they're looking for an exclusive use lease agreement, so we're gonna be doing an RFP for the same purposes that Marsh Field is intended for now, so.
I'm almost thinking it's time for us to look at the way the school lease goes, because when you think about it, we own those buildings, we lease them out to the school district, but when we need those buildings.
We have to pay.
Well, we pay custodial sometimes, custodial.
We pay.
But when we have town meeting, for example, they're required to allow us to host town meeting, we own the building. I'm tempted, you know, for example, I think what the Rutland Police Association did the Deveraux game at Marsh Field, they got permission from Rutland Little League, and.
And some pushback.
And some pushback.
So.
And some concern.
I just, I, if I could.
Yep.
Let's, one second, Sean. I think, before we just go hastily into a cookie cutter lease, like the last time, I want to have a discussion on it, because I don't agree with that girl softball can't play, they're asking to play one game a year, under the lights. And I don't care about the mound, I don't want to hear about the mound, I, I'm just saying, I don't agree, I don't agree with it. I think we'll be on that conversation, and if that's a deal breaker, then let's either include that in the lease, that they can do that, or you nut it. And I feel the same way, with all due respect, Sean, that if, if we're gonna give you a nice parcel of land and a nice location right across from the school, and to tell the principal or the head of the physical education that you can't take your kids out there on a field trip when nothing, it's not gonna cause any damage just because it's exclusive, then you don't have my support. That's how I feel.
Can I?
Go ahead.
To your question about the dollar lease, we put the dollar in there because we weren't sure what Little League was paying, so we just put the dollar in there just to, for an example.
I think that's, I think it's right.
I'm not sure if that's what they're paying, or if they're paying more, we just put that in as an example, to say that that's, we want the exclusive right. And I understand, the softball thing, hey, I'm right there with you, you know, and soccer.
It's a deal breaker.
Let's stay on soccer.
And soccer, the girls and boys are gonna be playing at these fields, it's not exclusive for boys, like Marsh Field is, for baseball. Softball's not allowed to go on there. We're having the U-10, boys and, boys and girls, U-14, U-12, boys and girls, they're all gonna be using those fields, it's not gonna be limited.
Good.
So, let's do this, because we don't have a map or anything in front of us, we think there's enough property there. Skip, you feel like, it sounds like you're in favor of it being done right, so I think the next question to you, to your point about having limited funds, the town at this point would not be putting in anything towards this, whether it's in kind or not, are you prepared to hire a surveyor and mark out that property? I think at that point, we'd be able to get a really good look at what the plan is, where the parking would be, we'd be able to bring in Gary, bring in Concom, make sure there's no drainage issues.
Oh, absolutely.
Because there have been issues in the back, as you know, with wetlands behind, so.
Yeah, absolutely, Rutland Usaka, the board and everything would be on board with that, and it also did like, did map out as well, you know, where the fields are gonna be going, well, did propose it to the board.
Right.
Where the fields would be going, where the parking would be.
So, I think the motion that I'd be asking for then, just to be clear, is not for approval of this, but for approval for you to move forward with providing us with a, a plan, an actual plan.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Still moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
Say, say again the motion, please.
I didn't actually make the motion, but I, so basically, we'll be giving approval for Rutland Youth Soccer to proceed with a survey of the property, mark it out, so we can see the layout. This is not an approval for fields. Yet.
So this is only for moving forward with development of a plan, so at that point, you'll come back to the board, and you'll introduce the board to the plan, and you'll take next steps if any.
All right.
All right. Okay, any more discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Sean. Paula Stetson, we're five minutes late, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Paula Stetson, I live at 228 Main Street. And I'd like to preface this by saying thank you to Gary and the DPW for the wonderful job that they do in town. That said, I'm here on behalf of the poor pathetic island on the corner of Maple Ave and Main Street. I've been doing that island for probably 30 years, and have never asked for any help, and I enjoy doing it, and the people enjoy it, it looks nice. And over the past year or so, well, we thought it was gonna be fixed when the sidewalks went in, but that didn't happen. And now, three more signs have gone up on that island, the street sign and two right, you know, go right signs, so there's really nothing that you could do to fix that up, and it's a mess. You know, if it had been leveled off and tarred over like the other islands, then I could put my pot there, plant my flowers, and I'd be very happy. I don't know, I talked to Gary last year about this, and you said that it was state property. Does the state really care?
That was also state property, that was an island we just took out because trucks couldn't make the corner.
Correct.
The one on Prescott and Maple is town-owned, and what we did was leave the granite there, but actually they have a monument there, and then we just paved in it. The signs can be moved because there's no blinking light on that corner, so the signs can be taken up, we can level it, I'll take care of the state part of it, or we can just do, copy the one like we did on Prescott. If you copy the one you did on Prescott, then you could put your flower pot there.
Right.
If we level it, and just move the signs, have the state move the signs, it's very busy traffic as far as, busy sign traffic.
Correct, correct. And that point that comes up with the rocks, the rocks were put there because the trucks can't make the turn, and they're always, if you put a flower pot there, they run it over. So, it would be nice if that was smoothed out, so the trucks can have an easier turn into Maple Ave.
Can I?
But, that would be a little.
No, the flower pot's gonna go further up.
Further down the Maple side, you mean?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, well, we can certainly arrange that.
That easy?
Well, no matter what you put there, people are gonna hit it. Notorious over the years, people hit that island. No matter what you put there, people are gonna hit it, you put a flower pot there, people are gonna hit it. Unfortunately.
One of the signs there, though, it does seem to be like an obstruction, it's right at window height in there, and you see cars exiting Maple Avenue looking to get onto 122A, and they have to kind of creep out a little bit more so they can see past this sign.
You do.
So, you know, maybe a little, take that sign down or readjust it or something.
Yeah, I'd like to see all the signs down, but I don't want to take the island away from decoration either, you have to have something there.
I, I have to say, even for, from a safety perspective, I like having that division there. I mean, if we have nothing, it's going to get worse, not better, because when we talk about trucks not being able to make the corner, a lot of them do. And somehow, some of them don't, and I don't think it's because the island is there, I think it's just because they're, I don't know what they're doing.
They're going to, they're going to, they're going to take their, their left hand turn short.
Yeah.
Know that about it.
Yeah. I would just assume, build it up, not take it down.
It needs the new granite.
Yeah.
Around the edge, because those are pretty well broken in.
Yeah, what we did at Prescott is we just burned it, we put an asphaltic burn around the whole thing instead of granite. Granite, if a flower gets it or a truck gets it, they can very easily pop that out of the ground.
Okay, and then you just smooth out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then just smooth it.
And some of those signs, it would seem like the go right sign could be right on the big pole, you know, the, the, the one that, the green sign, you know, to kind of get rid of some of that mess.
Gary, through the chair, Gary, when is that intersection slated for complete streets funding? Is it this coming year or the year after?
Maple, the sidewalks on Maple are for this coming year.
This coming year?
Yeah.
And would that island be part of that work?
We can put that in as part of that work, but we have to design. We have to design it.
It has to be designed, okay.
I like granite.
Yeah, everybody likes granite, I mean, granite is nice.
Well, it's the only thing that holds up.
Yeah.
It's the only thing that holds up.
It does, but it pops out of the ground too, so, and salt doesn't affect it like concrete, granite is a, is very strong, so.
For the thirty years' worth of work she's put into this, would we, would, would you be willing to design the island?
Oh, I'd love to.
Yeah? What do you think?
Are you kidding me? That'd be great. You know, and I understand this is just, you know, it's a nothing issue.
No.
Or it's not. And if, if money is the issue, it's not, I mean, we could, we could, we could get money to do it.
Well, this is where complete streets funding might be able to help. And not only that, if we are slated for complete streets funding with, which is through MassDOT, maybe MassDOT would actually be willing to pitch in through technical assistance or otherwise to help design the island for safety purposes as well. So, maybe there could be some potential partnership. Okay.
And include Mrs. Stetson's input.
So could you?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a schematic, but some.
Would it be too much to ask for a water spa sit out there?
A draft beer system.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Gary? Gary? Gary Keller, is there somebody outside waiting to come in? Because maybe they thought they couldn't just walk in.
Peeking in.
Prairie doggy.
I saw somebody.
Yeah, yeah, I wanted to like, leave them here.
Well, we've got the other meeting going on over there.
Connor, Connor?
Get in.
You can sit wherever.
Come on up.
Front and center.
You can sit, mom's with your son.
So I don't know the full backstory, but it was brought to the board's attention that you graduated with sort of a, a big milestone for the community, and I'm going to let Jeff Stillings, who brought it up to us, talk about it. I'm going to pass this on to you.
Oh, do the.
We are very happy to have you here, Connor, and I think we're going to, at this point, have you go up, if you don't mind, to the podium and introduce yourself?
My name's Connor Dearden, I've lived here in Rutland all my life, graduated from Waukesha Regional High School a couple of weeks ago. And I've been appointed to the United States Air Force Academy out in Colorado Springs, Colorado. I look forward to it, and I leave for basic cadet training in eight days.
Wow.
So if I may, so Connor's a very bright young man, as is his brother, Liam. And it was brought to our attention that you made this milestone, it was also brought to our attention that not only are you the, the first cadet to be accepted to the Air Force Academy from Waukesha, you're obviously the first ever from Rutland. And you're doing all the right things, and as a board, we wanted to recognize your achievements and remind you that you always have a piece of Rutland with you as you go forward on what's going to be a great career and a great future. We also wanted to thank your parents for raising you properly. So, with that, would you like? Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
So what we have, sir, is a certificate, certificate of recognition to Connor Dearden, Rutland, Massachusetts. The Town of Rutland Board of Selectmen hereby congratulate you on your acceptance to the United States Air Force Academy and wishes you great success on your journey. So we wish you Godspeed and always remember that you are Rutland.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let me take one, send it in.
Yeah, let mom come up too.
Want to go up with him?
Come on up, mom.
Come on.
I want to send you a laugh. I'll, I'll take it, I'll send it.
Okay, thank you.
Please go up. Sheila?
Really?
Oh. Sheila, I missed you, had the, okay, there it is. Perfect. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, Connor.
Good luck.
Are you packed?
Yes.
Are you packed?
Yeah.
You are, you're ready.
I didn't have to bring much.
Only underwear.
You better go home and pack. Got a lot to do.
Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
All right, congratulations, Rutland, Center of Massachusetts.
So as, as Connor is leaving, just to make a note, we did reach out to the high school, and, and maybe this is something we've been remiss in doing in previous years, but we've had a lot of really amazing graduates from Rutland, from the Waukesha High School, as well as from some of the other schools, from Bay Path, and it was really wonderful to hear about something special like Connor's, and if we hear of any more, we would be very happy to recognize them here at our meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, is there an avenue that we could put out in public for special stories like this to bring to our attention?
Well, the press is not here tonight, but yeah, we can put it on the website.
I think this is, this calls for working with the school district, I think, to really kind of bring forward some names.
Did, did we send an email to Beando?
Yeah.
We have an answer? No.
I have a list with all the students from this year who, the scholarship's smaller.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you. Thank you very much, so we'll do more at the next meeting. It is time for public comment, is there anyone here for public comment? Come on down.
I'm Connor Curley, eighteen, Blueberry Lane. I'm here to ask, when is the board going to get started on dealing with the water issue and the sewer issue? I don't know if you've had a meeting since the, the big meeting a couple of weeks ago, but what, what are the plans on how we're going to address the water issue and so forth and so on, so citizens can be apprised of what's going on? Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
So, we're definitely going to keep everybody in the loop with this, we have not had a meeting since the public hearing. At this point, we know that the CMRPC study is going on, we're also pursuing avenues that we've talked about briefly, but it was not on the agenda yet tonight, to reach out to DCR, as well as to MWRA regarding access to the Quabin, regarding kind of closing out all of those questions that people brought up, you know, you brought up a few at the public hearing, and we want to make sure we're dotting all of our i's, crossing all of our t's, as we're moving forward. I mean, I think, obviously, the biggest thing, we, we also, I shouldn't say the biggest, I would say the biggest, I suppose, is the CMRPC study, but we also have that Weston and Sampson I&amp;I study that's starting.
It's, the contract, I believe, is signed, so it's undergoing legal review right now.
It's in Boston now, just waiting for it to be returned.
So as far as?
So the board can approve it.
Thank you, so as far as first steps, that will be most likely the first sort of concrete thing you'll see in front of us, that Weston and Sampson contract to start doing the I&amp;I again.
Well, I, if I may, I understand that, I mean, we did that when I was on the board. But the issue is water, okay? And so, I'm wondering if the board has discussed, obviously you haven't, but let me render a suggestion like I did in an email, that we contact the United States Congressman Jim McGovern to see if there's any, any kind of a plan out there or any kind of a grant that would help us to look for water, tap into our state rep and our state senators, they both work very, very well together, a couple of dynamic ladies who I'm sure would, would champion that cause for us. Maybe there's some way we can drill wells, and we can get funding to do that, so that we can supplement potentially down the road the water issue. Because if more people come into town, which I personally am not opposed to, I'm not a stop growth person, I believe in nineteen seventy-three, although there were people who didn't want me to come into town, I came here and no one stopped me because there was a house that I could afford to buy, okay? And my, my kids got three great educations and are all doing very, very well, two of them teachers, one a principal. And so I know what this town's all about, and I'd like people to come in and enjoy what my kids enjoy. And if water's the issue, then we should be, we should be working to find it, and I would hope that you people are going to push forward very, very aggressively to do that.
Thank you, I assure you, you, that we are, and I think you hit the nail on the head by saying we need to supplement our water supply. It is very dangerous moving forward for Rutland to rely on a single water supply.
Absolutely, one of the good things is we don't have Holden in there anymore. During my nine years, the, our board were constantly fighting with Holden. We did a lot of aggressive things, but we had to deal with Holden, I don't think you have that problem now, like we did.
They are technically, they are technically still on that agreement, but it's very unlikely that Mashka Pog will ever be at the level it needs to be at for Holden to take advantage. But it's not a dead issue, it's just sort of not.
But it's, it's almost non-existent.
They wouldn't be able to draw enough.
Good luck in finding water.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you for the signs in the annex, through the chair, I just wanted to, well, he left, but I wanted to thank Mr. Connor. I wanted to thank you for the signs that you got for the annex, the Harry Johnson Jr. signed Inspection Services. And he also, he also gave us some additional signs for other offices, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, thank you.
I love Rutland.
We know.
Even though some people don't think I do.
And we do too.
We know he loves Rutland. Is there anyone else here for open session?
Dick Williams, overlook.
Sending you up, Dick. Sending you up, people don't get to see your face, I, I'm sending you up.
Dick might be here to announce that the trivia contest winner is at CMRPC's annual meeting.
What? Congratulations.
That was fun, I had a good time, and I've already told Janet that next year, let's do the same. But, rather than have a speaker. I really didn't need to stand up, but the, the last time I did speak, I had asked about sign permits for the sewer on Fairview and Phillips Ave, and I want to know if there's any progress on getting that, because those are private roads, and I believe the sewer is now being pumped through that, so, you know, where's the agreements? You know, I don't, I don't want the town to get nailed, let's put it that way. Because right now, I, like I said before, what's to put those people together and say, hey, we want ten thousand dollars a month putting sewer through the middle of the road? Yeah, I mean, it's not a town road, it's a private road. And like I say, there's already been houses put on, in, and they're operating in there, so. Any idea?
That, fortunately, although it was done first, that was part of the sewer use extension permit that was approved.
It was.
As, as the full build for Bryce Lemon.
And the people signed off on it?
I, because it was, it's a private road and a private sewer job, it wasn't myself, it had to go to the abutters.
Okay.
So I have, don't have an answer to that question yet, right, Dick?
All right. I think that's something between Town Council and you guys ought to really take a hard look at, in my opinion.
So is that section of sewer accepted by the town?
That's, none, none of it.
None of it is?
Private, private sewer.
Because that's part of the Bryce Lemon.
Yes, it's not our line, it's not the town's line. All right. It was approved for install, it was inspected for install, but it's not, it's not a town sewer line.
Is it part of the Bryce Lemon sewer line still?
Yes, yes.
So when the town goes to accept that in the future, it should specify that it's only accepting a portion of it and not the portion on the private ways that are going to be accepted.
Sewer easement, it would have to be a sewer easement that goes down the center, not the center, but the right shoulder of a private.
If the town decides to accept that piece.
Right.
I was going to say, Dick, you're, you're almost too early with this, because unless those residents want their roads accepted by the town.
I know.
They don't really have to do anything.
That's the way I look at things, I like to look far enough in advance, you know, so you're not going to get hurt.
Is there sewage going through that line right now?
Yes.
Occupancy permits have been issued down there, so yes, they are.
Gary, at what point?
You don't see that as an issue? Do we see that as an issue? With the sewer line being used?
I don't know about that one, I.
I do. I do, and Margaret and I are discussing that, I do.
Okay.
So the Phillips Road residents, are they tapped into that line?
Not that I know of.
No.
So, okay, do we know how we can find out if they gave permission? You said the abutters have to approve.
I would think the abutters would have to approve.
I would think it's their line.
It's their line, yeah.
It's their line.
Yeah.
How many abutters are we talking about?
Couldn't tell you.
All the way down, grab you, all the way around the corner of Phillips, so what are you talking, twenty, twenty-five? Yeah.
Do you have any idea, I know the town wasn't involved in that part of it, do you have any idea, though, if when that sewer was run down those, those private ways, whether easements were granted by the, the abutting property owners?
I do not know.
Okay.
Who's the right person to ask these questions to the abutters?
I'd go, I'd go right to the deed, but we can, we can certainly ask the abutters.
I'm wondering, can the town add a note to so, to a deed?
They can add a reference for an easement, yes.
A reference for an easement, but we, at the moment, we're assuming we have nothing.
They'd have to grant it.
For the moment, we're assuming we have nothing, and we, if the town was never granted an easement upon application for acceptance, and we couldn't get that easement, we would not accept it. So they would always remain private.
And the same problem somewhat is on Britnall, you got that E1 system, and to me, just be careful, I don't know if the town would get involved in that.
Wait a minute, the E1 system is not in the street, though, it's on private property.
Is the, the homeowner's going to come back at you, though, because?
Can they, it's on their property.
Okay.
E1 pump is, is owned by the, by the homeowner, not the town.
Okay. Can I have that in writing?
You'll have, that's in writing, it's in, we're responsible from the main end, if we accept the line, we're responsible from the main end.
The question is to whether or not the homeowners understand they have an E1 pump that's tying into the town sewer, and that E1 pump, if it fails, is their responsibility, that's another question.
And that's it, because there's so many of them tied in there, and elevation of pushing it up, I hate to be the person right there at the end.
Well, they should have asked a builder those questions.
And that's one reason why I brought to you people.
I'm not, it's not our responsibility for private septic systems, and it's not our responsibility for this E1, E, what are they, E1?
E1.
It's, it's not something a, a normal new homeowner is asking. It's, you know, right, if the toilets and the water work, they assume it just works, and they don't know the magic behind it, so I think to.
That's the problem.
To the point, to all, everyone's point, Gary, is it appropriate for the Water Sewer Department to reach out to these homeowners, these homeowners that have essentially private sewer systems, to let them know that the town recognizes that they have private sewer, and that there is nothing that the town can do if they have problems up to X point?
We can, that would be through the contract or a builder, it is in the sewer use rules, rules and regs that we own from the main, only to the main, everything from the main into the house is private.
But the, the letter doesn't.
Other, even, other than the E1 pump, the line itself.
Right, but, but a letter from the town doesn't have to go through the builder, we can send it to a homeowner of Rutland.
We could.
Proactively, right?
Do you want to get in the middle of that?
I would still think it would be the, the, an obligation by the builder.
You would think, but what's the point of, right?
People have called before and said, my E1 has malfunctioned, does, is the town responsible for it? And the question is quite simply no, and it's in the rules and regs, and everybody that has called, there haven't been many, understand that. But if we want to put something together and send it out, we can, we could do that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I, the, like Gary said, the E1 pumps are referenced in the sewer, it's the sewer extension rules, sewer extension regs, right? That's where the E1 pumps are referenced, but it wouldn't be a bad idea for the town to take it one step further and have a separate E1 policy. Or E1 procedures or something that where, you know, where notification of the homeowner is included, and the risks of the E1 system, and things like that.
Yep, and the number that are tapping into this line, you know, I, like I told you many months ago about, it's too bad they didn't put the three thousand feet of sewer line, gravity feet, because it would have been done.
Were those E1 lines engineered? Did, did anybody submit drawings for engineering specifications for the E1 pumps being put in a line up the road? Or actually on private property, but?
Well, the pump itself, obviously, is engineered and what it can, and the size of the pump.
Well, you've got five, six in a row. Was an engineer involved in designing that system?
Yes, because it has to be accepted by the main, wherever it goes from four sewer main to gravity feet, it has to be accepted. Yeah. I don't mean accepted by the town, it has to be. It has to be accepted, the size of the main has to accept the flow.
Sorry, I just, we have two separate issues here, right, we have the E1 stuff, and then we have the private sewer lines on Phillips and.
Yes.
Fairview, right?
And so it's two. And some of they have, some of them have E1.
Okay, so, but.
Gary, I, I would think the answer to this is no, but are enough people affected that we could do a form letter to all the water sewer users, say in a next bill cycle, maybe not the very next one, but one after that, that says, you should be aware, you know, know your sep, know your sewer system, know your water system, know what you're responsible for?
We could, we'd have to put something together, but people have to, and people do understand that the only time you use the E1 is for a four sewer main, not gravity. So would we have them know to all the?
No, they don't. No, they don't.
Well, okay.
I would lie, they don't.
We'll put something together.
Yeah?
Sure.
I agree, I don't think they know. They may know, but they don't understand. Knowing and understanding it's a different thing.
Or they might have had it told to them once, but it really, yeah.
Till it goes wrong.
Regarding the private ways, I think it would be a good idea to send, to send letters to the homeowners there, letting them know that they have a, essentially, a private sewer line that runs down their road, just to make them aware of that.
Can you put it on the town site? Is there, is there a format or some sort of a medium?
To put it on the town website? Or, or just notify the, notify the homeowners, I don't know, whatever is.
In addition. In addition.
I think for 25 of them, we probably need to do real letters. Yeah.
Yeah, I think what Sheila refers to, Jeff, is the billing process are only to those that are on the town system. I'm sure that folks know, and even when they have a private septic system, they do have in some cases, E1 pumps to push it to their leech. So, but that's private, a private system, septic is a responsibility, certainly to the homeowner.
Yeah.
Okay. So that'll be a separate notification.
Anybody else for open session? Comment? No?
Dick, thanks for keeping that in front of us.
Are you sure about that?
Yes.
Thank you.
I agree.
You're our backup plan.
You're our brain when our brains fail.
I'm going to, Gary, do you mind if I skip you for one thing?
No, because you've got something at the end of the meeting for me anyway.
Oh, good, okay.
Chief, have something?
I'll have the exact session.
Oh, okay.
He's here for the long haul.
We're flying through, flying through these items.
Yeah, we're, we're getting there. I'm skipping down to new business, second page. We have a lot of, and I just want to make a note, we have a lot of resignations, we have a lot of appointment requests, and we're right in that point where we're gonna be doing all of the appointments for all of the board-appointed committees and commissions, typically right around July 1st. So we have a lot of those. And I think what we'll do is, I just, I think in your packet that's tonight, you have the policy for reappointments and appointments and all the things that we need to look at. However, we have the Conservation Commission requested nominee here. So I think, since you're here, we, we may have questions for you, although I'm not sure how prepared we are. If you don't mind coming up. So without looking at the list, I believe there are two vacancies, is that right? I think so. Two vacancies on the Conservation Commission right now. This request had come into us, I want to say, three or four weeks ago. Did anybody, did everybody read that letter? Do you have it in your correspondence?
It's included in your packet. May 8th. From Melissa and June 10th from Concom. Great.
Is it in the giant new business pile? Okay. So why don't you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
So my name is Melissa Danza. I live at Nine Cameron Drive. And I submitted a request to be on the Conservation Commission. I am the Conservation Agent in the town of Uxbridge. So I'm very familiar with how Conservation Commissions regulate, the regulations that govern them, and just basically the day-by-day processes that we'd have to deal with, and applications and plans and things of the like. So just trying to, we moved here about a year and a half, so just trying to get into kind of what I've already been doing, but in my own town.
Thank you for stepping forward.
How long have you been Conservation Agent in Uxbridge?
I've been in Uxbridge for three years.
And is that your first position? Or have you done it in other towns as well?
That is my first town, yes. I graduated from college in 2015, and right after that, I started in Uxbridge. So started as the admin and then moved up to agent. So I did, I do all the site visits, you know, I write the orders and suggest to the board basically what I would then be ruling on if I was on the board myself, so.
Your, your major was?
Environmental science.
Uh-huh. Could you comment on the soil import issues in Uxbridge?
I can. So, you know, it was a very controversial subject in town. You know, it affected a lot of departments. You know, in conservation itself, we had someone, you know, that was doing the work on the commission. So it was keeping that neutral. Conservation itself wasn't as involved, I'll say. A lot of it was done out of our jurisdiction. And the one site that was, had the soil, was, had a superseding RDA from DEP. But, you know, we do work hand in hand in trying to do as best as we can with the work that came within our jurisdiction. But, you know, it's, I guess I don't want to get too, too much into it, just because it is my position that I'm in, and I don't really want to take a side, but, so.
Do you work closely with DEP on that and other matters?
Right now, we have nothing going on in the town. They have been stopped. So they are in court, so they've kind of been, been a hold, so right now, there's nothing going on.
Is the person involved in the soil import still on any board or commission? Anybody have any questions?
Sign her up.
Well, again, I, so we appreciate, oh, we have a question from the audience.
Lady B has a question.
Are you willing to spend an extra 22 years there? Because you have to spend 25 years on that board.
Yeah. Okay, that's all right. I'm not going anywhere anytime soon. I'm happy to with where we are.
Driving around Rutland, what's your overall perception?
Um, you know, it's, it's larger than the town that I work in. But, you know, population-wise, it's less. And resources, ironically, it is less. Uxbridge is very resource-laden, while Rutland doesn't have as many, but they're very important. You know, there's, obviously, we don't have a bylaw, I've noticed. And there's definitely ways that we can work into creating more preservation, whether it's open space or just subdivisions, you know, just preserving wetland that we do have.
Can you talk to us a little bit about wetland replication?
Wetland, is there something specific or?
So what's your experience been in the three years? I think Uxbridge has seen a few developments. And some of them are open space plan. How good has the town been about wetlands replication?
So, you know, it really depends on the project. You know, we have, we don't have a bylaw also, but we have a policy of 25-foot setback. And we, you know, because it's not a bylaw, we can't necessarily regulate it or enforce it. But we do ask for a more or larger replication area to allow them to go a little bit closer to the wetland. I would say, you know, especially with the chair that we have now, you know, learning with his background and implementing, you know, the knowledge of the commission and myself, the specific plantings and, you know, what holds and what doesn't. And we have certain restrictions and regulations that we will not release a permit until it's gone through two growing seasons. So we want to make sure that it's viable, you know, that everything that is replicated will stay the way that it was intended to be designed.
So I think I'm, I'm hearing that bylaws, the development of bylaws related to this would help strengthen this moving forward.
Overall, yes, it is.
What do we have now, 15 feet from the wetland?
Concom current policy is 25 feet. But as Melissa just said, we don't have the authority to actually force a developer to stay 25 feet away.
Without a bylaw.
If we had a bylaw, we at least have the, the option of doing that.
Well, you can help us with that.
What's gonna be your first goal?
You know, I think the best thing that is helpful is having standard special conditions. I know, I think you guys have a few already. But just tacking on those extra ones for every single project, you know, usually you've got your, your baseline if there is replication. You don't have to make things, you know, just pull things out of a hat. They're there, especially if it's, you know, whether it's just a driveway, you're putting a driveway in, you might have to do a little bit of fill. It's not really gonna be that extensive, so you always have those baseline conditions that are in addition to.
Biggest challenge in Uxbridge so far?
That's an open-ended question.
I know.
You're putting her on the spot. The boss is watching.
I, I, I should, I should be, I should be honest with you. My family lives in Uxbridge.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, no, it's, we've, we've had high turnover, I'll say. With, you know, department heads and town managers. So that's probably the biggest struggle.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. You made it all the way back from Uxbridge in time, which is amazing.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. So flipping back, Gary, come on up.
Okay, then. Are we gonna appoint her tonight or not?
No, like I say, I would really like to do all the appointments together. But I didn't want to not have her speak since she came all the way in from, from town. Yeah, we'll put them all together.
Does she have to wait till July or can we?
We'll do it next meeting.
You've got an empty space on the board.
They have two empty spaces.
They need people on the board to make their call room. Can we do a, enter own two months?
I mean, she's got a meeting.
How many, how many are they, he just walked out. How many have they seated right now? They have enough for a call room, but barely, right? They need, they do, I don't know if they're meeting again in the next.
They have a meeting tomorrow.
Oh, they have a meeting tomorrow? There you go.
Let's lock her in. Get away.
Let's do it.
Go ahead, make the motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Melissa Danza to the vacant, one of the vacant positions on the Conservation Commission with the anticipation that she will be appointed with all the rest of them in July.
Second to that.
From now until.
Okay.
The annual appointments.
Inclusive.
Second to that.
Great.
Anyone, questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard, thank you.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Melissa, if possible, please see the town clerk before the meeting tomorrow night so you'd be allowed to vote.
Do you know how long are they open until?
She might, she might still be in there.
All right, there you go. Got it.
Thanks for coming on.
Thank you.
Good? Okay, the only big thing I have in front of you, as obviously Sheila and Wayne skipped, and certainly Margaret are aware, but for Jeff and Leah are the summary of bids. What we do is, two weeks ago, we held the bid opening in the DPW. And these are bids for road maintenance construction, road materials and chemicals. So just to explain it briefly, the road construction, all of the contractors listed in that generally are used for state aid road projects, AKA Chapter 90. So all of those vendors have to be pre-qualified through the state. And if anybody is not pre-qualified when we have the openings, or for some reason are low bid, they are automatically rejected. So this is the summary of bids. These are all advertised in the Central Register, the Landmark and the Telegram. And these are, like I say, just the summaries of everybody that won the bid for your review and approval so we can send out the award letters.
Do you have a recommendation?
They're all on the, they're all on the summaries. That goes by low bid. There are a couple of cases where two companies bid the same amount for, for delivered and picked up. So we'll, we're just doing, doing a dual award. And that would be just the case of how close they are, if they have the product availability
So Gary, can you, can you just list them by, by the bid? So for process, process chemicals, you're recommending Holland Company?
For process chemicals, well, it'll show if you go down with the bid price, it'll show you, and it says over, the recommendation are those companies that are listed. Recommendation for contract award.
Okay.
And the number next to that would be for the, for the chemical listed in material or equipment.
Okay. All right. I see. So Holland Company for aluminum sulfate, Borden and Remington Corporation for sodium hydroxide.
Right.
And down the list. Okay.
So back in the day, we used to read all of these for the record.
We changed that, though.
I'm gonna make a command decision and say, you can read through this, ask Gary questions, and then we will make a bid for each title, i.e. process chemicals, road maintenance, construction. Okay? And obviously, this document will go into the record. Road materials, I think, just those three.
Gary, I do have one question about the, the liquid chlorine. Did that work out? Is the recreation department going to buy chlorine from the same company?
I have not received the price of what their pool company has given them. So I don't know what they can get for a price. But however, in the past, we've always supplied them with chlorine.
Mixed chlorine, though? Premixed?
No, we get it in the drum, and it's mixed through the chamber in the pump house.
Okay. The discussion was to have it brought in, almost like you would have an oil delivery into those big blue mixing barrels in the pump house? But that's not what the price that I'm looking at is, right? For Pure Aqua Pool?
No, generally, we have used, because of the price and delivery and availability is worse than chemical. But we can, and this is for the water treatment plant. So they do not bid that. However, we can get that for the pool.
Oh.
In small quantities.
No, 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 okay. So the water department is not part of this?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So for the, for the recommendations that you're making, you look them over, they all seem reasonable to you?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And have you worked with a lot of these companies? They're?
Yes, all of them. They're pretty much all the same companies bid every year. And they're really close. It fluctuates from year to year. One of them will beat out another one. So I think this year, we got actually some pretty good prices on some of the products and services.
What?
It's raining. Pretty good.
Yeah.
So what, what's required of the board here?
So assuming you don't have any specific questions, you can.
What's the recommendation on seal coating?
This right here.
Seal coating is the last one on... Is that, um... Seal coating is crack seal, yes, and that's the only, that's the only bid, number 21. So, that would be on the first page, and that's the name of the company, Seal Coating Inc.
That was the only bid?
That was the only bid. They've been once for quite a few years. It used to be Crack Sealing Inc. that bid, but for some reason, they just stopped bid or just outpriced themselves. I'm very happy with this, this company for availability and the work they do.
You don't have to do each one individually, do you?
No, if you could just do the titles when you make the motion, I think there's three titles.
Just go by the recommendation of the Highway Superintendent?
However you would, if you have a, absolutely, Skip, however you want to phrase it.
I'm with you there, Skip. I'd like to make a motion that do you approve the, um, Processing Chemicals and etc. recommended by the Superintendent of the Highway Department?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Can we just add the other titles to it? Process Chemicals, Road Maintenance Construction?
For this document, yeah.
And Road Materials. Second.
Alright, is that an accepted amendment? Yes. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll get those award letters out tomorrow. And just a couple of updates for the department. There is, we did finally get a qualified applicant to apply and who has accepted a position. He is scheduled for a pre-employment drug screen and physical this week, and once that's successful, he's ready to start immediately. He has all the necessary licenses, so that'll certainly be an asset to the department. We do have, and I've talked to Margaret about it, a slew of applicants who either have one license or the other. So, we're talking, and the union has approved that we can hire these people based on whoever has the best qualifications, and obviously, reference checks and so on and so forth, and then give him an amount of probationary time to receive the balance of the licenses. I think Sheila, you and I have also talked about that. I know I've talked about it with pretty much all of you. So, we're, we're going through that now. We've got a lot of applicants, a lot of people, a lot of experienced people, they just fail to go out and get their licenses and work out in the private sector, so they don't worry about it if they're on private property. So, we're working on that. I do have several pieces of equipment, so the board knows that right now, we're in limbo in the garage because we just don't have the money to repair and put back on the road. So, that's hurting us. We only have a couple more weeks to get through, and we'll be able to get those things up and running. We're going through all our necessary budget items now, just to make sure we're, we're on board with all town buildings and all supplies and equipment to get it up and, up to snuff and get ready for winter, as we know we do after the Fourth of July celebration. So, and we're working also, speaking of Fourth of July celebration, on the heights to get that ready. The bonfire is in place, ready to go, and we'll be mowing the lawn again up so they can park up top and get all that stuff ready. So, other than that, we've started our Chapter 90 work on East Hill, Phase 1, which will be approximately 1,100 feet of drainage and blacktop. We bought all the structures for the entire job, and they started delivering them today. So, I'm sure people will be happy to see that, that progressing. And that's where we set.
Anybody have questions for Gary?
Keep up the good work, Gary.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're trying. Thank you, sir.
Wait, you're, hold on.
What happened?
I have a question. I have two questions. Is there any money anywhere, considering you can't fix your trucks, to buy mulch for the front of our buildings for Fourth of July, which we wouldn't be able to wait for, I think? I think Mr. Carnacchio actually brought it up, and I need to give credit where credit is due. I'm surprised he didn't mention it again tonight, actually.
Yeah, that was donated the past couple of years.
Yeah.
And it is all trimmed and, and weeded, if you will, so it does look pretty sharp. It only takes a couple of yards, so I'm sure we can, I'm sure we can find something. I'll try to find something.
Thank you. And we...
But that, even that ramp in front of Town Hall, I mean, we gotta jackhammer that out. We gotta repour that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there's a lot of work needed.
A lot of work.
Even the pool, I gotta, I have to go up with some Set 45 and patch some holes with concrete to get that thing up and running, but there's a lot of, a lot of...
Which...
Safety issues and aesthetically pleasing issues that we do have to take, and we know that. And we're doing, we, we try to make the town as sharp as we can for the Fourth of July, and always pretty successful, so. I've not heard from anyone, the chief, I don't know if they've talked to you, or the fire chief as far as fireworks, because nobody's come to me and done the measurement to see where they can shoot them off from. So, I don't know any of that. So, and Margaret, we are, as you know, we're working on the roof proposals, we're working on the debris proposals for the, for the, for out back there to get that stuff processed. So, a lot of things in the works. So, we're working on the dam, multi-mill dam, design. And I have thought, there's no need to go into all those particularly. You probably don't want to hear about them now, but we'll certainly talk about them at a later date, so.
Next question, because we had an email, and I'm kind of including it under your department updates. The ongoing discussions about the play apparatus that they want to donate from the Heffer property?
The, oh, the playground?
The playground.
I did go up and look at it. I think it's the one that's, that's way out in the field. It looks like a pretty good set. I don't know where you decide to put it, other than we talked about Community Center.
Right, right.
So, so we'd have to, the things that have to be considered are the base for the playground because that has to be ADA compliant, and then also, some sort of ADA structure, because the structure itself is probably not ADA compliant. So, I think we need to follow up with Liz.
Liz, yeah.
With Liz to find out what monies are available, that, you know, that what donations are available that can be applied to those, those things.
So, she said the town account got about $700, and is there a single piece of ADA compliant equipment that could be added that would allow us to bring in the other structure? Because we have something else available.
Added to that structure?
Not added to it, in addition to it. Separate from it.
Probably not.
Next to it, near it.
So, a separate piece, such as the one up at the Memorial Playground? Yes, you can, you can add, you can add this extra swing.
Right, yeah.
For ADA compliance, sure.
But for that money?
But even the Memorial Field is really not an ADA compliant base because we just use playground mulch for that. So, it's very difficult to get a wheelchair through that if that's what you had to do.
Yep.
I mean, there's some interesting and very well-thought-out grounds of playgrounds, and I've seen them at some of the newer schools, and they're just, they're amazing.
Yeah.
It's like walking on a hard rubber.
Yeah.
And, and a playground can easily cost half a million dollars.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Or more, so.
So.
But there's monies, there are monies available out there for that.
So, I think before you two were on board, the ongoing discussion had been whether or not we could even accept a piece of actually very lovely and high-end, but still residentially created playground equipment. It looks like we can. It does meet the requirements of the playground regs under mass law, except for, as Margaret pointed out, the ground itself and having something ADA as well that's, that can be compliant. So, I think at the next meeting, we'll take a vote, we can't do it tonight, on, on actually accepting it and moving it, so could add that to the list. I actually think they had gotten people to move it.
Do they, have we gotten something specifically from the donor, the, the person actually donating the equipment? Because we'll need that in order to...
No, we haven't seen a thing yet, but I think we will be...
Okay, we'll need to have that in order for the board to take a vote, yeah.
And do we know where it would come from for site prep to install?
We don't.
Okay.
We don't.
No, I mean, the first thing to do would be get a price on that.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
But, okay.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I could, while Gary is up, the board at your meeting on June 1st voted the public ways that are eligible for snow and ice removal under Chapter 40, Section 6C. And you voted a contingent on legal approval. Legal recommended that one sentence be added, and that reads, "The below-listed private ways with respect to the designated mileage thereof have been determined to be open to the public use as required by the provisions of general law, Chapter 40, Section 6C." So, if I could just have the board's signature again, now that legal has added that sentence, I'd appreciate it.
Gary, I guess you can, I guess you can sit down.
I can't, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Margaret, you're up. Town administrator search process. We've gotten a few resumes, from what I understand, and I have reached out to the MMA, Mass Municipal Association regarding the potential availability of retiring or retired town managers who might be able to come in here and step in on the short term to, to keep things moving steadily along and mitigating any, any bumps. I don't have any names yet, but I, I have some thoughts on, on reaching out to people. We still have, the deadline to submit resumes is the 25th, and I'm still hoping that we have some additional, some additional candidates, so.
How many have you received?
Three, I believe.
Any good ones?
I haven't read any of them individually, but I don't know. I don't, I, I don't, I don't know. I guess I'd have to look at them and to determine if they're... I think it's really gonna be more about fit than, you know, based on, based on experience, so I'll look through, and I'll be sure to advise the board when the time comes. And then the last thing, the last thing under my updates is, we have an opportunity to join a class action lawsuit against opioid pharmaceuticals. There are several towns and many more joining every day, a Massachusetts municipal class action lawsuit, and I know the Attorney General is also on board. As it happens, KP Law, Mark Reich from KP Law, is actually heading this up for mass municipalities. So, I have reached out to him and asked him if he could send us a draft agreement that the board could look at in order to make a determination as to whether or not we want to join in. I've also asked police, fire, and dispatch for response data since the start of FY17, because that's probably gonna be very useful in moving forward and potentially joining this. So, Nick's putting stuff together. I got stuff from the fire chief. It's, it's a little tougher with dispatch because when the call comes in, you know, call might, might be, you know, unresponsive rather than something very specific. So, we'll, we'll have data, and Sophia, next meeting on July 2nd, expect to see a draft agreement on that.
Thank you. That's it?
Yes, it is for now.
Alright, we're heading into new business. We have the NVG Publix Restaurant. Is this just the ABC one, Abby?
This is. So, AB, the ABCC did have a problem with the DBA that was listed on the last application. So, what they, what they required is just a simple change to the DBA to Neighborhood Bar and Grill from what it was previously, and the board just needs to approve this, and we would get this back into the ABCC. So, this clarifies that the DBA is called, is Neighborhood Bar and Grill.
They didn't like NVG. Is that what happened?
NVG, was that its, it wasn't NVG, it was Tavern. It was...
It was still Tavern.
It was still Tavern, yeah.
Oh.
See, they, they want a street appearance in case someone's trying to actually find this organization.
Okay.
So, they changed this.
Alright, then, thank you. Could I have a motion?
Motion to sign license for the, where is it? Neighborhood Bar and Grill, Rutland, Mass.
Second.
They already have a license, right? This is an amendment.
Change.
Right.
Sign the amendment to it, yeah.
Thank you.
Got that out?
Change.
Thank you.
Change, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Come and down. We have a 61A notice from Glenwood Road.
So, the 61A notice was deemed insufficient by our legal counsel, and the board has, in the past, the board has been strict about, you know, with regard to compliance of the notice before the board takes any action on waiving a right of first refusal. So, I guess at this point, we'll, I would recommend that the board hold off on this. We'll contact the seller's attorney, ask for the compliant notice, and then bring it back to the board. And Planning also had questions about the legality of the, the operations or what, what it's classified as. And so, I forwarded that to the assessors, and in your packets, you do have a response from Diane in the assessor's office regarding the work that they're doing to check on, on activity on these parcels.
So, did you read her email? I read it, and I don't know that I was clear at the end of it, if it answered your question, did it?
It did.
It did?
Yeah, it's in the process of being fixed.
Okay. So, there was a paperwork issue? Yes?
It's a, yeah, it's hands-on paperwork. They need to go out and visually inspect.
Okay.
That's basically what she's saying she's gonna be doing.
Alright, thank you. Onward, payroll certification, which is in your new business folder.
So, the town administrator has the responsibility to certify payroll, but I am this year, especially in light of the fact that I won't be staying the whole year. I'm looking for the board to ratify this. All of the pay rates you see on the FY19 payroll certification are in accordance with town meetings' vote on, on payroll for employees. The only thing that this is missing at this point is the list of summer seasonal employees from recreation, which I'm waiting on. Other than that, everything is here.
Payroll? It's new old, there you go.
Oh, there it is. So, the rates have changed?
Yes, the pay rates have changed. The, the wage corrections for some non-union employees based on the wage survey that had been conducted, those are in now for FY19 wages. So, these do reflect the FY19 rates and total salaries in, in the salary position lines as voted by town meeting.
So, what happens is after town meeting, we go through, and the treasurer's gonna need this to show that we have certified all of the pay rates starting July 1st for the new fiscal year. Anybody have any questions? If not, I would take a motion to prove as presented.
Motion as presented, presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Thank you.
So, we brought this up briefly before, the board and committee reappointments. You have the policy and procedure, and you have the full list. And I would like everyone to take the next two weeks to review it, and if you have questions, that will be the time to ask them. And Abby, this was as complete as you could get it, right? You heard from as many people as you... Okay.
You highlighted the ones that didn't respond?
Yes. And there was a couple of people that are added to this slate that are new, private access officers. The Diane and Jackie, and...
Okay. Oh, I see that.
A couple of committees that I haven't heard back from, and I don't know if it's just that they have never confirmed anyone, but everyone else that's just not highlighted, I've either spoken to or heard back from the board committee group.
Okay.
But like, the Memorial Day Committee, we could just reach out to the head of the Memorial Day Committee, right? And say, we need a response from one to three, five people, for they're interested in staying on, right?
Well, I think a little bit from what Tom said before last meeting is that it's kind of dual, the way it's been run lately has been it's kind of dual with the Legion Post, right? The American Legion Post also?
American Legion, yes, yeah.
And... And there are no vacancies, Abby? Everything got filled? Like, I don't see... There are some vacancies. Okay, so when we do this next week, we'll see how many vacancies there are as well? Okay.
Next week or next meeting?
Next meeting. Ideally, we can maybe get that on the website. I don't know that people necessarily are aware that all of these appointments are yearly and that they can express interest and...
The vacancies are posted on the board.
Maybe, maybe Anita can get it as a bar, something? I don't know how many people go to our page. Alright. Moving on, we have a COA resignation. If I could get a motion to accept it?
Motion to accept the resignation of Gerald Kristoff as a member of the Council on Aging. With regret.
With regret.
Services.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Historical Commission resignation.
Motion to accept the resignation of Helen Viner of the Historical Commission, with regret. Second with regret.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a question for the resignations. I know we had talked about in the past, just reaching out to the resignations. I know with, Helen provided a nice letter and everything, but just reaching out, trying to just be a little bit more proactive, and for any resignation, just reach out and get feedback from their experience on whatever, their board or committee or wherever they served. Are we, is that something we are trying to do?
We have the ability to do that, and I have not yet, actually, I can't remember what resignation we had just recently.
We've got the nasty grand...
Concon. Yeah, so I did, I, I did.
Yeah.
I have. I, it might not be a bad idea as resignations come forward, not to make more work for Abby, but a thank you letter, accepting the resignation from the board, and we can just kind of circulate those at the board's meetings as well.
But if you know the individual, then you really don't need a letter from them because they are probably as, as healthy as I am.
No, I, no, 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 I wasn't necess, no, I wasn't saying, I was just saying generally across the board, like, not necessarily who, who it's coming from, but just to make sure that is there something, you know, thank them for the service, but also, you know, we can't have our fingers in everything, so can, is there a way that, you know?
Yeah.
Is it just...
Some ideas from them?
Yeah.
You know, envision looking forward. We can do that. And to Helen's resignation letter, she does note that the Historical Society voted that they'd like to include the Wood Studian, Wood Studio in the property rented, rented or leased by the society. Board of Selectmen is going to be beginning to talk about town properties in the Goals and Objectives Working Session that's upcoming, so this will be part of that conversation.
Thank you. You have the town planner posting?
Yeah, this is really just for the board's review. I put this up on the, I put this up on the, it's up on the town website, it's on the Mass Municipal Association website. I received a first resume today, so at this point, I'm just gathering resumes for upcoming screening.
IT Intermiss Municipal Agreement.
Okay, so the town of Barry is the lead town on the Information Technology Intermunicipal Agreement. The Barry Board of Selectmen is scheduled to sign this agreement tonight, and I asked the town administrator if he would just provide me the draft agreement. My preference would be for the Barry Board to sign first and then have it come to the Rutland Board so you could sign it at your July 2nd meeting. Now, to address concerns about contractor responsibility to maintain confidentiality, to comply with all terms of the contract, we did specifically add some sections in[1752.18] this agreement. Section 11, termination. Section 12, inspection and reports. And section 13, confidential information, are all, um, are all requirements that were, uh, added, uh, to this agreement, um, in preparation for the upcoming, uh, for the upcoming contract term. Additionally, um, the Massachusetts Office of Municipal and School Technology, uh, can be scheduled to come out and do technology assessments for various towns. And they could, um, they could come out and do an assessment for us, uh, to take a look at our protocols across all town departments. And, um, they could make recommendations for us as well on technology audits. So, in order to protect ourselves and our IT, um, infrastructure, um, we could ask, uh, the state to come in and assist.
Margaret, you good with this?
I am. I am with those additional, with those additional sections and as much protection for the town as possible.
And you don't need anything from us tonight?
Not tonight. I'm gonna be asking the board to sign at your next meeting.
Okay. Under old business, we have our very impressive, there's an objectives document.
Oh, yeah.
Fairly dense.
Yes. Um, my question for the board is, I'd be looking for the availability of board members the second week in July. Would Monday, July 9th be a possibility for all board members? I think so. I would schedule, uh, the Wood Studio. I could schedule the Wood Studia, Studio to have a real working session. Um, and this is probably gonna take, um, several hours. I have gotten some input from, um, a few departments. I, I did reach out and request, uh, input from departments, so I'm gathering that and I'll bring that to the working session.
We're talking day, night?
Night. What's the earliest everybody could do? Cause it could go a little while.
You, you say it.
I have Mondays off, so...
Well, so you're good. Leo, what time?
I would, the earliest, I mean, I can do whatever you tell, you know?
Yeah.
But eas, earliest, easiest is probably five-ish.
Five.
But if, but if earlier is better, I can make it work. If I, I mean, I know far enough in advance, I can schedule my day accordingly.
All right. You wanna try for a 4:30 start then?
That's fine.
And you can get settled and really get into it? What about you? Are you okay with that?
Are you kidding me? Come on, I have to work for a living.
I know!
I don't want to get through feeding my animals till 5:00 at night.
All right, 5:00. Five.
You know, I mean, and then, if they get out, then you spend hours or two catching them, putting them back in the damn pen. But that's beside the point. I mean...
Skip, I have a few kids that can chase animals for ya. I have a few kids that can chase animals for ya.
Yeah? Bring them with you. Let's see them. So, 5:00 at the Woods Building.
On the 9th. The Wood Studio, which you know, right? The one behind?
Studio.
Yeah.
I'll be there.
All right.
Okay.
Is he gonna check the calendar to make sure it's not being occupied?
Abby checked.
As of last week, July's wide open. I don't know when they...
All right.
Should we plan on ordering pizza or sandwiches or something if we're working? I don't care, but...
Yes. Working meeting. Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Yep. Absolutely.
All right, it's in there.
I'm sorry, what time?
Five.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. 5:00 PM. 5:00 PM, Wood Studio. Okay, got it.
Anti-idling policy.
Been batting this around for a year.
All right. So, the, the, while it would be, um, while it would be a, a helpful and, and reasonable policy to have, um, it is not a requirement of Green Communities. I know I've said this before. So, this is really an option for the board. This would prevent the idling of non-diesel vehicles, um, unless in emergency situations, you know, and...
I don't remember.
Or sitting in front of, sitting in front of buildings with idling.
Why did we do this?
Why did we not do this before?
I don't remember, but we had, we had restringent, the step on by people crossed away from us because their, their vehicles needed to stay running to their computers with this and they had to be warmed, they had to this and that and that. I'm not talking about Nick. I'm talking about the previous people in charge over there.
Oh, I didn't know where you were pointing!
Trying to figure out where that was headed.
So, this actually, this actually came to us from Green Communities tacked on to the fuel-efficient vehicle policy. So, this, this was just another attachment.
Would this be for, like, town?
Town vehicles.
Town municipal vehicles.
Mostly. Nick, isn't there a statute about leaving vehicles idling?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
And you're not supposed to leave an idling vehicle on a Sunday night.
Right.
Is that chapter 90, section 16 now?
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Okay.
There's a exception to converted vehicles.
There is.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Yeah?
Here's, here's what I think. I, I wanna, I wanna be less in the weeds of our department heads, of the police chief, the fire chief, and the head of the DPW. I think if they find that there's a reason, uh, for idling a cruiser out there, then it's on the chief. I don't, uh, I wanna be less minutia in there. So, I don't, I don't see why we even need to, to delve into that. We, we hire professionals to run the department, let the man run his department. If people are idling their cars and that's a problem, then let the chief handle it.
Anybody else have thoughts?
Yep. When you come back, when the chief, and I'm not saying this chief, but when the chiefs come back and say, gee, we don't have any money in our fuel budget, and they've got three vehicles running out there and you only got one person on duty, I mean, let's be real. I mean, I don't, it, it does...
Why would you have three vehicles running with one person on duty?
But does the, does the board need to get deep down into the weeds with the chief? You know?
No. Whatever you'd like to do, I don't, I don't really care. I mean, but...
Let these guys be autonomous.
Well, I think the argument would be, and I don't, maybe Margaret can speak to this better, a policy like this put in place will allow our department heads to have some teeth behind what they want to do. There's enough exceptions that Nick can still run his department safely. I do think that was important. But it allows them to be able to say, "Look, we've got this going on. You need to be careful. We've certainly had, you know, resident complaints in the past. How could you waste this, do this, your, you know, poll pollution, da-da-da-da?" And it, it gives, I, I think it's helping us give them a framework to work under, as opposed to us calling them and saying, "Hey, I just got a complaint from so-and-so. They saw your truck parked in front of Dunkin' Donuts for seven and a half minutes."
But, yeah, I mean, you already have a state law, chapter 90 law that says you can't idle for five minutes.
So, you know, it...
We've had complaints in the past about equipment sitting there half the night, sitting there idling, waiting for somebody to open.
But, okay, equipment, so we're talking DPW equipment?
No, 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 private.
Could've been...
Private equipment?
Well, but this is about municipal vehicles.
Well...
Yeah, we're good.
We have other issues.
I don't think it's just municipal vehicles, though. The statute covers all vehicles. Yeah. So, and this, this policy actually does touch on idling in school zones, for example, when, you know...
Of municipal vehicles?
No.
Well, the policy.
Everybody.
Any, any, any vehicles, um, any vehicles that are left running in school zones. So, if, if parents are picking up kids and they happen to be there 15 minutes early, I mean, I know that would be rigid, but, you know, if they were there 15 minutes early, they should be shutting off their engine for a period of time.
How is this enforceable?
Is there enforcement provisions under chapter 90s?
Under chapter 90, yes. The, uh, the town policy, we couldn't enforce it regardless of whether...
Right?
Okay.
Right?
But you can enfor, enforce chapter 90 under pri, for, um, private or commercial? Non-town, private or commercial?
Yes.
There's a statute that says the idling of vehicle for five minutes.
We have yet to assign an officer to a school to tell parents to shut their cars off.
But it's an unattended, I think it's unattended vehicles, it's an, leaving an unattended vehicle.
You, you can't leave an unattended vehicle running.
Right.
For any period of time. And you cannot leave, I believe it's five minutes, you cannot sit idle with a vehicle for five minutes.
So, here, here's a, here's a thought. Here's a thought. Rather than implementing a policy, how about signs that say, and I know that there's a cost to this, but maybe, no, well, posting signs i- that say, "No idle zone" and, and reference the statute. I mean, I...
There you go.
I believe it was two of the schools that had...
They have them already?
I was gonna say, I know at least one of them in town here does.
Who's asking for this?
The, like I said, this came as a separate policy with the fuel-efficient vehicle policy for Green Communities. This is...
Since learned that it's not a deal breaker.
It's not a deal breaker.
Are you asking for this?
No, I, I have an order in place saying, "Don't idle your vehicles outside the station."
That's as far as it needs to go, then. Are you asking for this, Gary? Are you asking for this?
Oh, no, sir. I mean, my, my equipment, my loads have to run during a, a, you know, sub-freezing snowstorm, but however long the storm...
As you see fit.
24 hours plus, so...
So, again, this has been before the board since the fuel-efficient vehicle policy came forward. So, Will?
I'm out.
No action? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll vote to take no action or...
Table it.
Table it. Thank you. Next.
Definitely.
Move on.
DPW Superintendent Search Process.
Okay. The board, um, I would, I would ask, um, that the board have a brief conversation with Gary at the very least, um, tonight, um, in preparation for posting, um, in order for, preparation for posting the job. We really have to think about this. It's, um, it does take time to fill these, uh, positions with qualified candidates and, um, you've got the job description in front of you. I'd be ready to post whenever I'm given the go-ahead.
I thought we already talked about this, that we wanted to...
We had a discussion about what we want to see the next DPW look like in the absence of Gary Kelleher.
You're gonna submit something, Gary?
I, as long as the board approves the description, I think Wayne brought that up a couple of minutes ago. I'm going to, I think you need to post it as soon as possible.
Yeah.
So, you just, uh, approve the description and we should get it up. And I don't know, Sheila, if you're gonna go through a search, uh, search committee. I don't know the process you are gonna go through, if you're just gonna go through Margaret's office. I don't know that, so, that's something you, you folks have to decide.
Did you see this?
That's his, the job description?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's his.
That's the one that he was hired under? Or is that the one that...
The one that he's hired under didn't look like this because we've, we've standardized the format, but...
This is where you think we are today, uh, for your successor?
I have zero issue with this dra, job description. There's no reason why we can't make the motion to have Margaret post it tonight.
Let's make the motion, ever post it and get it going.
Let's get it going.
Yep. We've been fooling around, it's too long.
Can I take a motion?
Make a motion that we post forthwith the Town of Rutland Superintendent of Public Works vacancy as provided to the board.
Second.
Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gary, as a follow-up, there's nothing to do with this job description. I, I do think we all with you should have a conversation about what that department should look like. It doesn't, it's not here in this job description. It's a question of how many people should you actually have? And what should water sewer actually look like? And what should the organizational structure be? Because this is gonna be a big change and this is the time to do stuff like that.
Easier said than done, Sheila.
I know, but...
Easier said than done. There's a tremendous workload down here. The staff has been cut, um, not because of current vacancies, it was cut prior to that, like, four positions 10 years ago. You remember well. So, it's easier to send it down of what it must look like and what it will look like.
What it should look like.
DPW super also oversees water and sewer, who also has to go out and, and patch concrete holes. He has to put up signs. He has to, that's not the way, in my eyes, it should be. I don't, again, I don't object to doing that. I like getting out and doing some work, but, um, you're so short on labor down there. There's so much work to do and people just don't, don't speak.
I've highlighted references to water and sewer, you've, you noticed that on the job description, because we don't know exactly where that's going, so that is, it's gonna stay as is for now. But maybe we're in a different direction and candidates will have to be, you know, informed of that. But I completely, and I think I said this last meeting, I completely agree with Gary, that the DPW Superintendent, Gary, does not currently have enough time to administer the functions of his department. He's out there o, on the road doing work and, uh, it's, it's an awful lot. So, I think the successor should absolutely have more of an administrative role. And if that means, uh, you know, if that means additional staff in order to be out on the roads?
Yeah, but I think even the org chart that you have and Sheila, um, veterans of the war...
I didn't bring it in tonight, but...
...who's approved and called for assistant, DPW super. Of course, that's not gonna happen. The first thing you have to do is you get the labor requirement filled before you start hiring managers. Um, it's very important. It's important to the town and department to, to hire your people, because we can't, certainly can't afford to hire out contractors to do all of our work. We just can't.
So, go ahead.
Do we have chain of successor in case you get struck by lightning?
We do not.
We have a gentleman who's certainly capable of, of doing, doing the, the road work and, and he does it very well. And he's also a certified mechanic and welder and he, and he can run the shop very well. He certainly runs it in my absence.
But we have a list of, boom. If, if you were to walk out tomorrow, who, who's that go-to person? Behind you? We have that?
Yeah.
Well...
We don't have it formally.
No.
But, but we, I, I know who we, I know who we would, we would ask to step into an interim role or, or an acting role.
I thought we talked about that at the last meeting, that, uh, with your recommendations, you're gonna give us a, a hierarchy of...
Yeah.
You can certainly have that, Jeff. I can tell you from those that I've talked to in the department, nobody's interested. And that's only because, and I say it honestly, it's because of what they've seen the position turn into. Only for that...
Not interested in your position, but second in command.
Yeah, so we have that now.
Emergency acting role.
Yes. We have two foremen. Actually, on, on the books, one is certainly highway and the other is, is water. We do not have a foreman for sewer, but that's because that's certainly one of the highway divisions, so...
But this is your opportunity to spell it out, who's...
So, we have the organizational chart that shows the current, the current structure. So, what we're gonna do, I'll work with Gary on this, we'll, we'll build that out some more to show what the ideal, you know, what the ideal organizational, organizational structure in your department would look like. Okay? And then I'll, I'll get back.
Please, if I'm one has one, right? It's clear.
So... So, not to put you on the spot, but how many people, if you could have as many as you thought this town needed, how many would you have to hire tonight?[1538.48]
Tonight, right now?
Not including the vacancies?
Not including the vacancies?
Well, just how many people do you need to have a full department? And I don't mean on the books, I mean an ideal for you full department, and we won't include the one you're about to hire.
Fill my vacancies and give me three more.
No. That's not true.
Of course it is.
You're down four already.
I know, so fill my vacancies.
All right, you're down four. You've got more streets, you've got more everything. You mean, three more people are going to take you and put you up where you need to be with water, sewer, and everything else? You need at least five more people, Gary.
I'll take five more.
At least.
So wait, again, are we talking five total?
No.
No.
Full vacancy plus five.
Five additional besides the three that have recent vacation, vacancies.
He only has one qualified applicant so far, so there is a problem.
Yeah, and it is a problem. Because it's a training, it turns into a training session, which is okay. I mean, that's how basic, way back when, how everybody got started, they had to be trained on the job.
Do you find for the applicants, is, are we not a competitive town? Is it our location? Is it salary? Like, what's that piece?
I think the salary part of it, the benefit part of it for the Town of Rutland is very good, as far as the upstream people go. I would compare them to, and you've done the study, we've done the study during the negotiations. Skip, you've been part of it, Sheila, you have. Margaret, you certainly have. So I think they do, they do very well by their contract.
Licensing requirements are an issue, especially with water. It's getting harder and harder, and the water requirements here in Rutland don't just require the person to work water, they also require the person to, you know, to snow, to plow snow routes in the winter. And so trying to find people, especially for water, I keep saying, especially for water, DEP has come down really hard with certification requirements, and it's, it's hard everywhere finding certified water operators at this point. But, but by combining those requirements, the CDL, doing plow routes and doing water, that's a combination that's even more, more harder, even harder to find.
Well, the water department has to plow, because there's nobody else to plow.
That's right.
The requirements on just the CDL license, and the CEUs you have to go, and the classes you have to attend, just to keep up your CDL, and for the hoisting, and for the medical documentation, medical cards, it's not just you're a truck driver. I mean, you have to have an education to be one.
And you touched on this a little bit, but is it a, a union negotiation thing as far as the town providing a certain amount of time to get those certifications in, or grant funding, or some, I don't, funding of some sort within the contract to get those certifications, those missing?
The contract says that you have to have X in order to obtain the job, and part of that is all the licenses.
Yeah.
Now, once, once they get the licenses, the town, even the union contract pays for the, for the upkeep of those licenses. So they pay for, when it expires, they pay for renewals. They pay for the CEUs. It's just a matter of getting everybody there to take care of it. And it's not just go and take a, you know, a multiple-choice test, it's, it involves study. You've got to take a class, and you've got to take a test.
Thank you, Gary.
All right. Thank you. Under correspondence, you have a letter from the COA, and we also had an email from Margaret asking for times. Jeff, I know you responded saying, whenever. Have they been scheduled for our upcoming meeting?
Not yet.
Not yet.
And I wasn't, did that email, was that email requesting a time within our meeting time to talk, or was it just a time in general? I wasn't clear on that.
I think they're just requesting to meet with the board.
Okay.
They were requesting a meeting, but they didn't specify a date. I think, well, this, this letter is dated in April, so I know they're expecting, you know, they'd like to meet with the board sooner rather than later.
So, so what I'm thinking, we obviously want to get through the goals and objectives meetings, meeting, and one of the things, and I think you had added a sort of yes as well onto it, was talking about the need to start planning for a new senior center. It obviously isn't a specific reaction to this letter, which talks about a lot of smaller issues going on, and we know that there's been some meetings set up to try to work out some personality issues, whatever's going on. But I think, you know, there was one paragraph that really outlines most likely what the problem is, and, and I think the problem is across many of our departments, that the council on aging continues to grow. And it's true. Our aging population continues to grow, they need more space, anybody else who uses that building needs more space, we need to make sure the studio, the Wood Studio is available, because we all need more space. So I think having the COA get involved, once we've sort of settled that timeline as far as getting that new senior center on board with CIPC, with FinCom...
Planning.
And seeing that plan move forward long-term will help to mitigate some of the issues that I think we've been seeing over the years. If you guys are okay with that, maybe we can reach out to them and say, look, and they've heard it, I know Nancy was in the room, when we talked about it, I want to say at the information session prior to town meeting, to just let them know that it's on our radar, it's one of our goals and objectives, and that once we have a plan in place, we'd like to bring them in and have an overall talk about kind of that big picture.
Okay.
They sent the letter in April asking to meet with us. I'm happy to show my face if it's Muffin Mondays.
You are welcome to go down there anytime.
I'll be there with my muffins. If you bring coffee, they have muffins.
Bless you.
Thank you. I mean, they sent the letter asking to see us. We have 20, 40% of the board is brand new, and I'm more than happy to go in there and say hello.
And I've been in a couple times, but haven't touched on specific...
Right. I think you should absolutely go visit. I think as far as a board meeting goes, to have them come in, we'll do that, too. Yeah?
I would like, yeah.
Bless you.
Reach out and say, when can I, when can I, I'm serious about the Muffin Mondays, if that's where...
I think they'll want to know if you're buying the muffins.
Oh, buy them muffins. But if that's where the bulk of their members are going to be, I think that's important. I've, I've met with the RDIC, just popped in there.
Great.
Tomorrow night, I'm going to ConCon. I think, let's do it.
Mm-hmm.
Just to say hello.
So you're going to go in and say hello? Did, did he get the COA calendar in his box yet? Do we all get the, or it's in the office, right? The newsletter? The newsletter.
Yeah, there's a stack right in the office.
Yeah. So if you wanted to pop in during one of their events, they actually do breakfasts? Is it twice?
For like breakfasts.
A month? Skip, is it twice a month?
Oh, and don't forget about the big pancake breakfast.
Yeah, twice a month. Skip's actually your best.
That's a busy day.
All right. Is there anything else before the board? Okay.
Can I ask a...
Yes, there is.
So at the last meeting, Margaret, we were going to send out a letter to the developer on Charnak Hill Road in follow-up to Gary's email. Gary sent an email in December asking what the status is on the repairs, and then we were going to send an official letterhead?
Yes, Gary was...
I have that drafted on...
Yeah.
We're drafting.
I actually shoot it off to you guys, because we were going to look at it together, because you want it to come from the board of selection after the DPW?
We do.
Yes.
It just wasn't...
So I do have that drafted, I'm just finishing up some of the grammaticals and...
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
I could probably have that to you by the end of the week, I don't know when, but I have been contacted by a paver and a contractor to meet me on site to decide what we should do with it, but I still would like, I'd like the letter finished up, so we can give a look at it.
Yeah. The board took action on that at the last meeting, didn't they? They, they voted to actually issue, you voted to send the letter?
But...
Good. Okay.
We want to get it done during the summer months, and if you have to give them a timeline to respond, we're already at the fall.
Yep. All right, so if you just want to distribute the draft?
Thank you. Anything else? I have a motion to go into it.
No, I'm sorry, from the chair, if you're going to make a motion to the chair, and I just, I think we all have to know a couple things. What I'd like to know is, I mean, it's the end of June for the, for the sake, you've got this, so you probably have the posting out for my job, let's, for the sake of argument, July 1st. So I want, would like to know, and you guys would like to know, when that posting is going to close, and Margaret, if you're going to have a search committee or interview process, you're going to have an interview committee, and you also have to know, and you've got to put it together, when do you want, or he or she to start? So you have to, you've got to put all these things together, or else we just put them in the paper.
Yeah, because we're looking...
You know, not...
Yeah, we're looking at, at some overlap for the transition period. Gary's end date's not until December 4th, so we need to, we need to know that for sure. We need to know that for sure.
I explained a couple of things that's going on in my...
I'd like to today to you, but that's okay.
Because we have to be prepared to be able to tell the candidates what their start date is.
Yes, you do have to be. And I have offered to be a part of the transition process. My fear, as you, as all you, all you folks know, is the budget, because the budget's not going to support paying two of you.
Not for an extended period of time.
And we all know that. So it's, it's very important to take all this stuff into consideration and put this plan together.
I would love to see the resume screening solicitations go out with this announcement to start getting our panel together, who's going to start reviewing these things.
Next meeting, we could ask for volunteers for a resume screening team, and we'll ask for qualifications from the people who are interested in serving on it, you know, to be sure they know what they're looking for.
Why are we waiting till the next meeting? Can we put it, we're going to put out his announcement?
Oh, well, you can do an informal announcement now. We're looking, town's looking for a resume screening.
If you ever come up with something, just make sure you get a toll...
Close them at the end of July, and then, and then search?
Um...
Or screen, whatever you want to do.
Say that again, Gary, I'm sorry.
If you have the month of July, I mean, we can put the posting out immediately, but we still don't have, if people are going to call, they're going to see that, they're going to ask a lot of questions. So if we have the month of July, bidding closes on July 31st, and then we, you probably go through a couple of weeks of screening, and then setting up the interviews. It's a process, and you guys all know that, so...
So there's a whole other way that we haven't discussed about, to your point, about how to do this, which is rolling applications. We interview them as they come in. We take the right person.
I don't think that's real fair.
I don't know if it is.
Well, you know...
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
You could do a closing, you could do a closing date of July 31st, and, and then just start the screening process. It gives, it's going to give a full month. We're going to get this posted before July 1st.
How many applicants do you expect?
For DPW superintendent?
If we got six, it'd be a lot.
Well, then we don't need a screening committee. The chief of police, you had 40-plus.
Yeah.
And you had to get a reasonable number down. So if you only have six, then scrutinize each one.
I actually hoped for more than six. I was hoping for more like 15.
I hope so.
I think you probably have a pretty, pretty big field. I mean, I'll nominate Dick.
Does the board want to...
Just to be the...
Does the board want to...
At every meeting.
Does the board want to list engineering degree would be a plus?
Sure.
In addition to the experience? Okay.
Preferred. You use the word preferred, but not mandatory.
Okay.
Face specific.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else? Anyone? Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Hold on.
To get the reason...
Hold on.
It already says it. It already says it.
Can you do it, Mike?
Yeah. I moved that we go into executive session for reason number three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public party, party, body, and the chair so declares only to return for adjournments.
Chair declares, this is a rule called on executive session. Off you go.
Yes?
Clock aye.
Aye. Clock aye.
Whiteman, aye.
Stone's aye.
Tim aye.
Thank you.